The Town of Plainville, established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
We'll get started here. Okay, good evening, everybody. Today is Monday, March 1st, 2020, 7:00 PM. It's a regular town council meeting. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I will ask Councilman Underwood to lead us in that, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. We'll move along on the agenda. We do not have a public hearing or a presentation this evening, so I will ask for a motion to approve minutes of our previous meeting.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve the minutes from February 6th through 2021, regularly.
Second, I have motion.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Announcements or reports? Does anybody have any announcements or reports this evening for us? Okay, moving on. Appointments and resignations. I believe we have one appointment on our list this evening.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Motion to accept with regret the resignation of Gabriel Mercado from the Plainville Fire Department.
Second, I have motion.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Do we have any other appointments or reappointments to any boards and commissions tonight that are not listed? Okay, we shall move along. Our town attorney isn't here tonight. So, Robert, we are into your report, so I'll turn it over to you, the reporter, the town manager.
He's a little sooner than I anticipated, there.
Aren't you ready? I mean, we'll give you a minute if you need it.
No, I'll try to get through it. First item I have is the refunding bonds. The town currently has several clean water funds, loans, excuse me, with the state for treatment plan improvements that were completed in 2011. The remaining loan amounts total approximately $12.5 million, and those loans are at an interest rate of 2%. For the last several months, interest rates for general obligation bonds have been at record low levels. If this trend continues, the town would could save a significant amount of money by paying off the state loan, converting the remaining balance into a general obligation bond. The maturity date of the proposed bond would be the same date as the existing loan. Barry Bernabi from Phoenix Advisors is participating this evening via Zoom. Can you hear us, Barry?
I can.
Okay. To give some additional information about this opportunity, there is a resolution under New Business that would authorize the issuance of refunding bonds for payments of the outstanding principal and interest of the four, on four of the outstanding clean water fund loans totaling $12.5 million. This evening, we're just looking for the authorization to be able to do it, and certainly we'll follow the, where the interest rates go, because there is a little bit of a lead time. But I'll let Barry Bernabi from Phoenix Advisors talk a little bit more about that.
Thank you, Robert. I thought you gave a great summary right there. I mean, I don't want to talk just for talking sake, but you're absolutely right. Even though rates have gone up a little bit over the last couple of weeks, they were starting from such a low point, as you described, that the town has an opportunity to refinance all of its existing 2% clean water funds. So we would be refinancing loans at 2% at a lower rate, somewhere between 1/2% and 3/4 of 1% on those clean water fund loans. So, I mean, rates could go higher, the savings could go lower, but I think it would make sense for the town to authorize the issuance of these bonds, which will allow the town to move quickly if rates remain favorable.
Barry, you did some analysis today as well, if I, you know, based on, I think it was based on some today's interest rates, or last week's, was it?
Yeah, on Fridays.
Yep. You want?
And the savings based on Friday's rates, the rates were basically flat today. So, total savings net of all issuance costs for refinancing the town's clean water funds is about $465,000. And as Robert said, we would not extend or shorten the term of the existing loans. We would keep it apples to apples. And the town would have an option to recoup that savings in any manner that they want. We kind of fall to equal savings, a uniform savings each fiscal year. But that's up to the county side.
And Barry, that works out, at least based on your analysis of about $40,000 plus or minus, you know, over the remaining life of the bond per year? I think it's somewhere in that range?
Exactly.
So that's what it would mean on an annual basis. And we have about nine or 10 years left in our bond, in the loan?
Yep, you're absolutely right. It's 10 years.
Okay.
So it's closer to $50,000 a year.
Okay. Okay. And that's, again, based upon the rates that, you know, people were giving last week. I know that the rate, the bond yields dropped again today fairly significantly, at least according to the headline. So that's, you know, if that continues and to stay at that low rate, then we can expect that the savings will be in that range you talked about.
Exactly, exactly. You hit it right. I know rates change every day, so you shouldn't count on this being exactly where it is. But many communities have done this already. Simsberry has done it, you know, Milford has done it. With rates this low, it's a strange opportunity to actually refinance a loan that's at 2% to go even lower than that.
I don't know if you have any questions of any of the council members?
I have one question.
Yep, if anybody has any questions for Barry.
Once we make this authorization, how quickly can we act on it?
Well, that's a good question. You know, it does take a little bit of time. What we have to do is prepare what's called an official statement. Now, I've started a draft on it already. We need to send it to the town, the finance director, and update that document. We'd have to talk to the rating agency and get a bond rating. So, long story short, it takes about a month, a month and a half, once the town has the authority to do it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? I think that's a great idea, of course. You know, anytime we can do these kinds of refinancing to save some long-term dollars, it's always to the benefit. And I know Barry, he's been advising us for many years, so always good to see you, Barry. Thanks. Yep. So I think it's something we should certainly take advantage of as soon as possible, you know. I know that there's a timeframe that has to be worked out, but that's great news.
Okay, all right. And we'll move on to the next item. Barry, you're certainly welcome to stay for the meeting, but if there's something else you prefer to do, feel free to sign off.
Bye, Barry.
Next item is on the road paving bids. I'm going to let Matt Daskel handle this one, and then I'll do the COVID-19 update, and then go back to happenings for Matt. So we'll do a little back and forth.
Good evening. Before you, tonight, we have plans to move forward with the road bond paving program. This will be Phase 2, years 6 through 10 of the project. Town staff is making several recommendations as we prepare for reopening of the asphalt plants in the spring. Two of the three are under state bid, and one is a prior vendor. The first recommendation is to authorize the purchase of $600,000 of bituminous concrete, or pavement, from Tilcon. That would be under state bid. The second would be, again, a state bid. This will be for Cromwell Concrete, for concrete block in an amount not to exceed $50,000. And the final would be to utilize Jones Construction in making repairs and adjustments to catch basins on various streets. Jones was a prior low bidder on the 2018 bid that they prepared, and they're willing to hold their current contract without increase and have worked well with the town previously. The recommendation of town staff is to proceed with Jones Construction in an estimated value of $50,000. There's three items under New Business regarding these recommendations.
Okay.
All right, if there's no questions, I'll move on to the COVID-19.
Well, yeah, we can hold them till the end if anybody thinks it's fun.
Sure, sure.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry. COVID-19 update. The Senior Center has scheduled a COVID-19 vaccine clinic for Plainville residents 60 years of age or older on Friday, March 19th. The community health center will be providing and administering up to 200 doses of the vaccine, with a second dose follow-up clinic scheduled for April 16th. Plainville residents 60-plus years of age can make appointments for the March 19th clinic by directly contacting the Senior Center at 860-747-5728. The community health center has also expressed interest in conducting a larger vaccine clinic that could be scheduled for a Saturday and administer 400 to 500 doses. And town staff is trying to work with CHC to see if a larger vaccine clinic can be scheduled. And that would be open to anybody who's eligible at that time, you know, depending upon the date. And it wouldn't, you know, so anybody who would be eligible at that point in time could go to the, to the Plainville one. We're going to try to set it up and see if there's an opportunity, maybe at the high school or something like that on a Saturday. But we'll have to work that out with the superintendent of schools, who's generally a pretty cooperative guy. So I have positive feelings about that. But if not, we'll find an alternate site. Maybe, yeah, you can report on that, maybe. Or maybe you want to, maybe you do want to report. Why don't you mention what's happening on Friday, then, during my report? Yeah, right now, if you're ready.
I don't want to take away your airtime, Robert. I'm very excited that when the governor's announcement came out about vaccinating all educators, everybody's been scrambling to figure out how the best way to do that would be for their community and working with our health directors, initially looking at trying to put on our own clinic and through getting doses of vaccine from the health director, which have been limited in the past. So I was able to reach out to Griffin Health, and we coordinated over the, since Thursday, we've been able to coordinate a clinic, vaccination clinic in Cagle Gymnasium, at my high school, for all of my school staff, cafeteria staff, and bus drivers. So it accounts for about 400 to 450 people. We still have some registering. It'll take place Friday, this Friday, March 5th, for the first Pfizer dose, and then the second dose will be March 26th. So by the end of March, our entire faculty will be fully vaccinated. So everybody's very excited about that. We've been planning it, coordinating it, doing the layout. So I'll be happy to give a report on how that goes with that number of people, and maybe you could, you're certainly welcome to use the space for a town clinic, so.
Thank you for providing the information. I did read your email, and it's great. I have to say, Plainville is certainly trying to forge ahead in getting our citizens and staff and people that need to get vaccinated and make it, kind of ease it up for folks, because it isn't easy to do this on your own, certainly. And I think the Senior Center doing what they're doing is most helpful. If folks can call in, provide their information, get registered, and then I presume they will automatically be enrolled to that second appointment, correct? So I think that's, that's a good thing we should be doing for everybody in this community, and if we can do a much larger one down the road, that would even be outstanding, you know. So anything we can do to help people, it is, it's a challenge, certainly, for some folks, and we need to make sure we get them all healthy and stay well. So thank you for your report. And Robert, thanks for coordinating through the Senior Center, and hopefully down the road, we can, as I, as you said, sponsor a larger clinic.
Yeah, we keep getting thrown these little curveballs as well, because we were gearing up for essential workers, which was, you know, the town-side workers, to be eligible beginning on Monday. Then late last week, we were notified that it wasn't going to be essential workers other than the school personnel, and they were going to limit it to 55 or older. So we were getting ready to put a lot of our employees into the system to give them a chance to get vaccinated, you know, eligible to be vaccinated, and then, you know, then that got turned around a little bit, so.
Yeah. Well, it's hard to try and make a plan with the unpredictability of where some of the information from the leadership at the state is coming. It's, I'm sure they're doing the best they can. And also, availability of vaccine, that's another piece of the puzzle, so. But I think the plans that the school has going forward and what we can do in the town side is definitely a big plus for a lot of people. They'll appreciate that, no doubt.
And there's, and I know that Steve didn't mention this, but, you know, he deliberately picked the Friday for the vaccination clinic, so that if somebody had a, you know, wasn't feeling good the following day, they wouldn't be missing school. So you have a couple of days to recover for those few that may get slightly impacted and not have to miss any time at work either. So I think that was very forward-thinking.
Good thinking.
That's right.
Thank you again. Great. Does anybody have any other comments about our vaccine programs going forward?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Rosemary, go ahead. Yeah, I know. Hi.
I just really did, what you said, Kathy. I'm just really happy that the staff has been able to successfully put together our clinics that are in town. And that's great news about the school staff, too, Superintendent LaPage. I was talking to somebody earlier today who's very active in our senior citizen activities, and she's, you know, was really stressing how important it is for many of our seniors not to have to travel too far to get a vaccine. So she was quite pleased to hear about that as well. And I think it's a step forward, and if we get one opened up on a Saturday for all those populations, even better. So thank you very much to the town staff for working on that.
I'll turn over the microphone to Matt Daskel for the happenings, and then we'll be available for any questions on either what we reported or any other items you might want to speak to.
Good evening. We have several happenings to report on this evening. The first is, as mandated by Connecticut state statutes, the Plainville revaluation will be beginning for all real estate in the town. Revaluation will be effective for the grand list of October 1, 2021, and that will be for bills mailed out in June of 2022 due July 1 of 2022. A question and answer sheet is available both in the Assessment and Revenue Collection office and on the town's website, plainvillct.com. Property owners are asked to assist in this important effort. Your cooperation will ensure the success of this revaluation and benefit not only you, but the entire town. The next event that I had was actually a cancellation. It is with deep regret that the fire department announces the cancellation of the annual hot air balloon festival. This is due to safety concerns, health and safety concerns, as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic that is ongoing. We hope to see them in 2022. Hangar 4 at Robertson Airport. The roof is out to bid currently with a return date of Wednesday of this week. We expect to review that, the bid results, very quickly. We will have a recommendation from the Aviation Commission shortly thereafter, and we expect it to return to council for action in the not-too-distant future. The Plainville Senior Center has a number of happenings to report as well. Free COVID-19 testing is available in March, March 2nd, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Testing is free. No insurance is required. This is drive-through and a continuation of their previous efforts. They're also offering a mass distribution. This is drive-through or walk-up. That'll be Thursday, March 11th, from 1:00 to 2:00. They're invited to stop by. Masks are compliments of Bob and Amy Stefanowski, who worked for the Jewish Federation in 2020 to create masks for heroes. Many thanks to Saint Senator Martin Hearn, Henry Martin, pardon me, State Representative Bill Pettit, for their efforts in contributing to this. There's also several other events. We will have them available online, and welcome any questions at this point.
Okay, thanks, Matt. And Robert, thank you for your reports. Does anybody have any questions or comments for the report that Matt and Robert provided to us?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Just a quick one about the road bond. Do we have an updated list of what streets we're hoping to get to this year?
Yes, we do.
Is it online, or is it?
I don't know. Is it online yet, Matt, or?
Or it will be at some point. I had, you know, a couple people ask, and I imagine at some point it will be.
Yes, we do have a list.
Published.
I'm not sure that it's online yet.
Okay.
Just to speak to a couple things. One is, we are trying to coordinate, you know, the gas line, you know, replacements. Some are, and some aren't as good a timing as others, but we've actually had a delay. Some streets, because of valley water and ever-source gas, some that we were planning for next year, actually got, you know, we were planning to go forward, and then, you know, then we pushed them back because of, you know, some construction that we became aware of. So we do have a list.
And it's a flexible list. It's just that.
It is. It is to a point. I mean, if there's a street or two, we could add, you know, if necessary. If the council sees something, we can certainly add a street or two. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Matt, did you want to say something?
I was just going to note that Technical Services has also reached out to property owners on those roads that are impacted, encouraging them as well to complete any work that they might have that would, you know, interfere with the road or result in that, so that we don't wind up having just paved the road, and then, you know, a month later, someone decides that they're going to connect to gas or water or sewer or something along those lines, so.
We've tried to maintain it. We tell them that, once we repave the street, we're going to do a five-year moratorium on digging in the street unless there's, you know, unusual circumstances. With our new road opening specifications that we reported on several months ago, that, you know, the repairs are significantly better than they have been in the past. So that loosens it up a little, if there's a little bit of give and take as far as that's concerned, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the town manager with his report, or anything else that comes to mind? Okay, good job. Thank you, Robert and Matt. The next item under our agenda is a public comment. During this time, we welcome the public to come to the microphone over in the aisleway. Please state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to speak to the council. Does anybody wish to speak? Joanne, you're it. Well, okay.
Where are the rest of the people in this town? I think it's the town of the walking dead, honestly. I know I'm almost one of them. For crying out loud, where are you all? Come on, folks, you ought to get off your couches and get down here. Joanne Edmund, 166 West Main Street, right here in Little Old Plain. Well, it's like being back in the saddle again, riding the range once more. Think of it as a rodeo. First thing out of the chute is, of course, the trail. I was going to say the CPAC convention, but I'll get to that. The trail. Looks like they've started work over from Town Line Road. People over there aren't very happy. I don't know where they are, but they should get down here if they're not happy. The people on Perron Road really don't want that in their backyard. And Pierce Street, of course, is such a busy street. I don't know. And with the proposed three apartment houses that, if they put apartment houses in that area in back of the firehouse, it's going to be awful tight with traffic. I don't know how you're going to do it. And Broad Street, Broad Street people are going to lose their parking on the street. And the park, do you want, do you want possibly druggies and perverts near your kids? No, I don't think so. Anyway, I'm not for the trail. I'm for it going down Route 10. Knock yourselves out. You know, I'm sure many of the bicyclers are shooting down there now. But it's, it's not for going through town. You're not going to benefit that much. You know, they don't buy that much. They're busy unpackaging and leaving their trash on the trail, a lot of them, because that is a problem. And it's going to be a problem for us, the taxpayers, because it will be a budget line item. Now, enough of that. I hope, whether you were a Democrat or a Republican, you watched the CPAC convention. It was terrific. It was super great. We have got so many good people coming along. And our president, my president, and I still feel my vote was compromised. Our president gave a superb speech, absolutely great. Trump, he was wonderful, absolutely wonderful. And I hope he leads the GOP to glory. And that's it for me tonight.
Okay, thanks, Joanne. I don't see anybody else here this evening from the public that would be interested in speaking, so I will.
Kathy, one more thing.
Okay.
Chris, there is a crisis at the border.
Okay.
Okay, believe it.
You can discuss it after.
Believe it. I have to say.
Okay, moving on. Yeah, or other things. Okay, so, public comment, we have closed. There is no old business this evening to take care of, so I will ask for a motion under New Business, please.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'll take a shot at this.
There you go.
Introduction of an action on a resolution entitled, "Resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Plainville Authorizing the Issuance of Refunding Bonds for Payment of the Outstanding Principal Balance of an Interest on the Town's $727,351.91 Project Loan Obligation dated September 30th, 2006, CWF 542-D, $19,66,549.41 Project Loan Obligation dated March 30th, 2010, CFW 542-C, $2,249,116.49 Project Loan Obligation dated April 1st, 2009, CFW 183-CSL, and $12,535,000 General Obligation Bonds dated January 4th, 2012, and costs related thereto." Second.
Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Are there any comments or questions regarding the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number two, please. Anybody?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve bid number 2021-13B, bituminous concrete materials.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Robert, are you guys reading off the new business? Can you read off this one? This sheet has a little, has a little more details regarding that, if you wouldn't mind referring to that sheet?
Let me pull it up.
Do you have it? I can give you mine.
I'm sure I have it here in the present meeting, online. No, I only have this.
Probably page 4, online.
Oh, here it is. I got it. My apologies.
I think it's printed for us, yes.
I found it.
Thank you.
Let me, may I rephrase?
Please do.
Motion to award bid number 2021-13B, bituminous concrete materials, under state contract number 19PSX0261 to Tilcon, Connecticut, Inc., New Britain, Connecticut, in an amount not to exceed $600,000.
Thank you. I have a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Item number three.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Make a motion to award bid number 2021-14B, concrete block and brick, under state contract number 17PSX0146 to Cromwell Concrete Products Incorporated, Cromwell, Connecticut, in an amount not to exceed $50,000.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number four.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the extension of contract, dollar sign 2018.
Okay.
Is that supposed to be numbers on? Number sign, number 2018-13E, "Construction, Repairs, and Adjustments of Catch Basins on Various Streets with Jones Construction LLC, Farmington, Connecticut, for the 2021 Road Bond Construction Season in an Amount Not to Exceed $50,000." Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so for our next. Okay, so for our next motion regarding the resolution for application for our Historic Preservation Grant, before we have that motion and second, I'd like to ask our town clerk, Cindy Porini. Welcome, Cindy. She's going to do a little bit of explaining to us so that we and those listening know what the grant is all about. Cindy is our new town clerk, and nice to have you with us tonight.
Glad to be here. Good evening. The Historic Preservation Grants are awarded annually to each municipality. The grant application that I would like to apply for would be completing an ongoing project that my predecessor, Carol Skoltedi, had been working on for the previous five-plus years. It would be to complete the preservation of the last 18 land record volumes dating 1869 through 1920. They're a little cumbersome. They are averaging roughly 25 pounds, 18 by 7 in size, their canvas volumes. What they would do is we would recreate them with Atkins Printing. We would reduce them in size and have them on all approved materials and have them basically smaller, a little tinier is what we're... It would assist any title searchers and attorneys and my staff in the handling of the materials is what we would like to do, basically.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Cindy. We appreciate the information. Robert?
It would also preserve space in the vault by making them smaller so that you wouldn't take up as much room.
Yeah.
And room is money in the vault, so.
There it is. Awesome. Okay, with that explanation, I will now ask for a motion, please.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Underwood?
Motion to adopt a resolution entitled, "Resolution Authorizing Application for Historic Preservation Grant."
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions regarding the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, please. Anybody?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Underwood.
Motion to approve the tax refunds as listed on the addendum.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Okay, so we've taken care of all our new business items, and we're going to take a break for a moment or two. Our next topic of discussion is regarding the Town Manager's FY 2022 Proposed Budget, so we just need a little setup time. So we're going to take a little bit of break, and we'll be back in a minute or so. Thank you. So at this point, I will turn the meeting over to the town manager, and following will be our Superintendent of Schools. I think that's the order in which we're going to proceed.
We'll do a little back and forth.
Back and forth. Okay, you'll begin, though, correct?
Yes.
All right, take it away.
Thank you. Pursuant to the Plainville Town Charter, this evening is the opportunity to present the Town Manager's recommended budget to the Town Council. I do want to thank in advance Superintendent of Schools Steve LePage, Sam Adlerstein, and David Levenduski, and the rest of your team for cooperating and their cooperation in this evening's presentation, as well as putting their budget together and getting it to us in a very timely fashion. And I also want to thank my staff, Matt Daskel, the Assistant Town Manager, Rob Buden, the Finance Director, and Lisa Mateer for putting the packages together. Matt, you received your budget books this evening. You'll see a little different format, and hopefully you'll appreciate it, make it easier to read, easier to understand. And Matt Daskel, with assistance from Rob, I believe, did have a lot to do with changing that format, or improving on the format, I should say. The Town of Plainville Proposed Fiscal Year 22 Budget, which is scheduled to go into effect on July 1, total proposed budget of just over $64 million. That represents an increase of $1,576,000 or 2.52%. As recommended, this proposed budget would increase the tax rate by 0.67 mils or 1.94%. And on this screen here, you could see at least what the mil increases and the percentage increases have been for the last four years. I would say that the four-year average is 0.65 mils or an average of 2% a year, and that includes a 0% increase that was approved by the Town Council last year. We have four major categories of the budget. We have the Board of Education operating. We have the town government, what we contribute to capital projects, and debt service. And as you can see from this slide, I'm only recommending increases to both the Board of Education's operating budget, which now stands at a 2.26% increase, and the town government budget, which stands at a 3.72% increase, with capital projects staying at the current year's level and debt service staying at the current year's level as far as the overall budget is concerned. This is a pie chart, and this basically is a pictorial representation of what you saw on the previous slide, or at least the percentages, the major categories that make up the budget. Reason for this is I wanted to point out that you see the very small sliver at the top that's a purple, if you can make out the color, that represents the contribution that the general fund makes to capital projects, the CIP budget. And that number has been shrinking over the years, excuse me, because we've kind of changed our philosophy as far as funding of CIP, coming from other revenue sources. We've tried to take away, try to use a little bit of the unassigned fund balance. There are some state grant opportunities as well, and we'll go through that detail as we get into the capital projects area. But otherwise, you can see what the budget categories are, the amounts, and what they represent pictorially. Speaking a little bit about our expenditure increases, I'm very proud of this record. I believe the Town Council members and the Board of Education are as well. And this is a 10-year bar chart of the last, of the percentage increases to the town budget. And the average increase as proposed over 10 years, or has been approved over 10 years, is 1.72%. So expenditures have increased an average of, over the last 10 years, by 1.72% per year. To put that in a little bit of perspective, at least the last several years, sometimes they say, well, okay, what have you done for me lately? You know, let's not talk about nine, 10 years ago. How about the last four years? The inflation rate over the last four years has averaged 1.82% average per year, and the expenditure increase has averaged about just a little bit over 2% a year. So we're pretty much mirroring what the inflation rate has been, and I think that's at least one benchmark that can be looked at. Some of our estimated direct revenue changes, we're projecting that overall revenue that could help support this budget would total $656,000 plus. $587,000 of that is the new, the increase in the grand list, what that represents based upon the current mil rate, and you should be relatively familiar with that number as we reported and added at a previous council meeting. The second line item, which we call sundry, transfers in and other taxes, it's an increase of $177,000. The reason for that increase is I'm recommending that the fund balance contribution to this, for the fiscal year 22 budget be increased from $300,000 to $400,000. And you'll see a decrease in another line item, and I'll explain that in a moment. And we've also added another $50,000 for the personal property audit revenue. We separated that out last year. We feel based upon the, you know, the results of the last couple of years, personal property audit revenue, that increasing what we anticipated by another $50,000 would make sense. So between those two line items, that pretty much makes up the reason why that number is increasing. We see some slight increases in other revenues, fines and fees, and license and permits, slight decrease, well, in use of money, that's really your investments, what we're getting on our money. It ticked up last year, but then it came crashing down this year, so we feel that it's appropriate to lower that expectation for next year. As far as intergovernmental, we had budgeted in previous years revenue from LOSEP, which is local capital improvement funds that we get from the state. We really can only use them for capital improvement programs, so what we're doing is we felt it was best for presentation and for budgeting to have the local capital improvement revenues that we get from the state directly into the capital improvement program, and that's why we increased to a certain degree the fund balance to balance that off.
Robert, can I ask you a question while you're at the revenue? Regarding the governor's proposed reduction or flat funding of ECS funding, how does that work in here, or have we not done anything with that yet?
We are using the governor's figures, so we have flat funded in this particular budget the ECS increase.
Okay, and is there, what is the chance it'll change in your best guess?
I would say at this point in time, it's probably 50/50. I don't know if Steve has a...
Because that was around 200 and something thousand increase in revenue to the town for ECS, right?
It was 235,000.
235, okay, so. As far as we know, we don't, at this point, we're just taking it as being the same as last year.
Yes, we're using the governor's recommended numbers at this point in time, and that's certainly one of the items that could change between now and by the time you set the, certainly the mil rate. I don't know, Steve, if you want to... I said 50/50. I think you're a little bit more optimistic, but maybe not.
Just based on what I'm hearing from the executive director of CAPS, Fran Rabinewitz, and her circles with the legislature, and the word is that there's not a lot of support for the hold on the ECS funding. It's a good formula that they've spent a lot of time working out. It's the 10-year phase-in, and we're sort of in the middle of that, and it's been doing what it's intended to do. So, you know, there's a lot of pressure not to hold that, but we'll see. There's no certainty yet, but I think there's a lot of opposition to doing that, from what I'm hearing.
Rightly so. I agree.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Focusing on the general government budget on the expenditure side, these are the major categories in the general government budget, which includes, we call, you know, general government, public safety, public works, health and human services, civic and cultural, employee fringe benefits, and sundry, including transfers out. You'll see the total amount of $691,000, which in an earlier slide was what we're proposing for expenditures. Pretty much 71% of the increase is in two categories, one being public safety and the other being public works. I'll talk a little bit about what's driving those costs up in a moment. In fact, I'll talk about it with the next slide. Payroll. You see an increase in payroll of a little bit over $321,000. A good portion of that is in the police payroll. Part of that is because last year, we had budgeted a 2.25% increase in the salary line item, and you may recall, we went through negotiations with the police, and we ended up approving a 3% increase. So based on the fact that we budgeted 2.25, playing catch-up at that 0.75, drive some of our payroll increase from budget to budget. So that's part, that adds to a certain degree why that number is where it stands. As far as utility costs are concerned, the major driver of that is the valley water proposed rate increase that's impacting our budget of somewhere around $170,000. And we, you know, we have hopes that it won't be that high, that by the time PURA makes their decision, you know, later on, that we'll be able to perhaps lower that amount or at least impact the whatever mil rate is set by the Town Council. And with regards to the employee benefits, you know, we continued, this has to do, for the most, well, I shouldn't say for the most, but a good portion of that has to do with the pension, the fact that we're lowering what our expectations are on our defined benefit plan, you know, what we expect to get for investments as recommended by GFOA, and, you know, a lot of that is based on the market as well, so.
Robert, what about the health insurance?
Health insurance, we're budgeting a 1% increase.
1%, and is the 1% also going to be... The Board of Education also had a change in their health insurance after they passed their budget, right? So is that going to change on their end as well?
If the council reduces the budget during your...
That's an area that could be done.
Yes, and I will report on what that potential impact may be later on in the...
Oh, okay. I didn't mean to jump ahead.
Oh, no.
I'm just asking while we're going.
Yeah, no, not a problem at all.
Thank you.
A lot of it means that you took the information I sent to you last week and went through it and...
I pay very close attention to you, Robert.
Okay. Well, that's on the town government side, so before going to debt service and capital improvement and final up, I'll turn it over to Superintendent of Schools Steve LePage to report on some slides with Board of Education.
Thank you, Robert. I appreciate it. And I'd just like to echo and thank Town Manager Lee, as well as Assistant Town Manager Matt Daskel, and Rob Buden for their partnership in working through the challenges of budgeting and coming at it from a critical yet collaborative approach. I want to thank Sam Adlerstein and Dave Levenduski. I told them both they could stay home tonight. I didn't know how crowded it would be, so. You know, Sam especially spends, we spend a lot of waking hours, and we talk about budget in our sleep, so we spend a lot of time on budget, and he does a great job, along with my whole administrative team. And I want to thank our Board of Education, too, for being very supportive. And I wasn't sure if we'd be livestreamed or not tonight, so, you know, they can see the recording, and I've been through this budget and every detail with them so many times in so many meetings. I think this is the ninth presentation since we've started a budget process back in January, so I know there's no surprises in here, and I'm looking forward to sharing our budget with you. So just an overview of tonight's presentation. I'll talk about the Board of Education approved budget and the process that we followed. I'll review the grants and ECS revenues, as you had mentioned earlier, Ms. Puglisi, Chairwoman Puglisi. And then, just a little bit, of course, because I'm the superintendent, who's very proud of our schools and our staff and what our kids are doing, just a quick, you know, highlight on how our schools are at the center of our community in many ways and benefit the community in many ways, so. Moving on to our guiding document, our vision document, which we will be redoing our district vision and our strategic plan next fall, at the start of next fall. This has had a few iterations in the five years, almost five years it's been in place. This year, we added the three pillars at the bottom of equity, social and emotional learning and mastery, and we have those arrows to highlight some of our key areas of need based on COVID. But our vision remains the same, to inspire and prepare lifelong learners, to follow their passion, inspire, engage in their communities, and positively impact the global society. And we do that through all of our resources being closely and tightly aligned to that purpose and all the actions and goals within that. So you've seen that a lot, and I won't talk about that, and I could talk about it all night. Go ahead, Matt, if you don't mind. So the next piece we'll talk about is the Board of Education approved budget and the process. And if you look at the 10-year history of the Board of Education budget, as Robert had shared with the whole town budget, with the numbers being close to or right around the rate of inflation, I won't go into all of these numbers, and I know you've seen all of these, many of you, year after year and been part of the process, but the average increase over 10 years has been 1.83%. The adjusted increase over 10 years has been 1.09%. That factors in the ECS cuts mid-year and at the end of the year, the mid-year cut we didn't expect, and you see those on 2017, 18, 18, and then the health insurance increase that we were not anticipating, that it was just an added cost. It didn't add, you know, any value to the budget. So the 10-year inflation rate is 1.73%. So if you look at our increases over those 10 years compared to inflation, you know, I believe in supplying and providing everything that our kids need to be successful in our schools, but I also have a very, I've only been the superintendent my second year, but being part of it for all these years, I have a very strong sense of, you know, the taxpayers' well and trying to balance what's best for our kids, but not looking for too much, especially in tough times. So the per pupil expenditure, the per pupil cost is calculated every year. Plainville ranked 111th out of the 166 towns in Connecticut, which is, we're lower than 66% of all districts. That's the number of dollars spent per pupil in your district. So I like to say that we get a lot of value for our dollars that we spend on education in this town, and it's through careful budgeting every year that we do so. On the next slide, you'll see that our contractual increases, and I don't have to explain collective bargaining to any of you, you know, but for anyone who's going to watch this, but just the process of going through the bargaining for a reasonable contract with all of our different groups, you know, administrators, teachers, paraprofessionals and tutors, our custodians, our office professionals, and then with our nurses, while it's not a bargaining group, but we have to give a fair and reasonable increase, you know, through collective bargaining, or it goes to mediation and arbitration, you lose good staff members as well. So I believe that, you know, in having Town Council members and board members involved in the process, we've been able to negotiate very fair and very reasonable contracts. But when you look at all of this, and, you know, this is also including the 4.5% health insurance increase that we were initially told to factor in as a good estimate before the rates came out, so, you know, you'll see a little bit about that later. But the contractual increases that we... about that later, but the contractual increases that we had budgeted on were two point five two percent, and as you know, as you saw already in Robert's slides, the approved budget's two point two six percent, which is, you know, quite a bit lower than this, so, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. If you look at the, the next slide, the Board of Education approved budget of two point two six percent, it just breaks it out by the line items, you know, salary benefits, those being the top two, and you'll see it on the next slide, but my, my initial proposed budget, I went to the Board of Education following our joint presentation to you on the nineteenth, we had our, our budget book review and kickoff started on the twenty-first, and I came in with a two point eight four percent budget, that included some COVID recovery, there's, there's a lot of, I'll talk about that later, but there's a lot of need based on recovering from COVID, despite that we did a really good job in this town, there's a lot of need for remediation, acceleration of students' needs, because everyone's, a lot of kids are learning in different ways, so we had factored in a hundred thousand of estimated ESR funds, that's the, you know, the original CARES Act and ESR two came out, we didn't know how much the ESR two amount would be, there was talk, but we didn't know. We had two subsequent reductions in, in our, in the budget that, you know, after I gave my initial proposal, that I said, you could consider this, and then consider this, so we were at, we went down to two point five two, and then we finally ended up at two point two six is what, what the Board of Education adopted. We did take out all COVID-related expenses from our operating budget that the two point two six represents, including software, including programs, including several members of of staff, we had five members of staff, four point five staff, we have, we had added to help offset COVID need, COVID needs, so we took all of that out, it's going to be funded by the ESR grant, you know, it's important to know in that last bullet point, we're going to have to reevaluate when we, when we're approaching the development of the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, because, you know, if we're, if we, we add, we add staff, we add programs, we need to be cognizant of what the most high-leverage, you know, staff and programs we have, and then, you know, reduce accordingly, make adjustments as needed, you know, we understand that adding staff through, through projects and through a grant is not sustainable in an operating budget, so we'll, we'll look at that and evaluate that as we get closer. I know there's a lot of time on that slide, this one just is a pictorial representation of what the different line items you saw on that last slide, and you can see the salaries of four hundred and ninety-seven thousand, benefits on here are three hundred and fifty-three thousand and change, but that represents four and a half percent, and as, as Robert said, you know, the town council will be able to, you know, obviously take that down because of the new insurance rates that came out, actually, the day after the, the approved budget, an email came out at about ten thirty in the morning giving us the rates, so that's, you know, that's something that you can look at. And then you see the, the small amount of all the other, all the other lines, the transportation and other services, that special ed contracts going, going up, and our bus contract, you know, increasing by, by our five-year contract a little bit, and then our utilities and building supplies went down, so that's, you know, the, the majority of our budget is obviously in staffing, we're, we're a staff, a staff-centric organization. The grants and ECS revenues, we received the CARES Act in amount of three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars that started last year, it ends on September of two thousand During the year, we were also, based on a survey that was sent to superintendents, it was really a, I'm sorry, but a ludicrous way of determining what our, we thought our need would be for keeping our schools open this year, at the end of last spring, it went to superintendents, you know, what do you think you're going to need, and it was, it was specific on what you could ask for, and we put in for, you know, everything I thought we would need at that time, it's hard to predict, we didn't even know what model we'd be opening in, so we, it ended up being two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars was awarded to Plainville. After we came back, we started, and you'll see, we started in hybrid for three weeks, or four weeks, I'm sorry, and then we switched to all, all in person, we've stayed that way ever since, there are districts that still haven't gone back, and that money is really intended to keep schools open, so a lot of those districts that put in for millions of dollars of money to stay open and never opened, had to give the money back, so Plainville ended up getting eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, which was about six hundred and forty thousand dollars more than we were originally awarded, so we've spent about a million dollars through the end of this year, this fiscal year, we will have spent about a million dollars on all the PPE, the staffing, the extra staffing, the remote, you know, teaching supports, there's a long list that we have to justify with the state, but, so between the, about half of the CARES Act and and the entire coronavirus relief fund has been spent at this point, it's about just over a million dollars. We were then informed about the ESR two, which we had no idea what we were going to get, we were awarded one point six zero five million dollars for ESR two, it's really for those four areas that are bolded, academic support, learning loss, learning acceleration, recovery programs, family and community connections, school safety and school, social and emotional well-being of the whole student and the staff members, and then remote learning, staff development, and the digital divide, you know, bridging that gap, which we've done an incredible job in this town, so that's really what those funds are intended for over the next two years, that money is good until the end of September two thousand twenty-three, and that's how I was able to take all those COVID-related expenses out of our budget. It's intended, and this was specifically stated in the meeting with all the superintendents from the state, it's intended for need supplementation, not budget subplanting, that question was asked and very directly stated, it's not allowed, and then the grant is to fund necessary support staff and several learning recovery projects we've been working on, we have about twenty of them itemized at this point, we're already pretty close to the amount, but we're really excited about what we're going to be able to do with those funds over the next two years. Our team's working really hard on projects and getting ready. The, the COVID financial impact, and you, you were all involved in this, this was the money that was not spent, that was in our budget last year, so realized savings of nine hundred and eleven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars that were not used because of being shut down for those last since March, March thirteenth on, so nine hundred and eleven thousand was given back in, in the form of six hundred and forty-one went back to the general fund, and then two hundred and seventy thousand, two fifty was, was used to reduce the capital, capital budget, so through that, you know, and through the work that the town did and the town council, working together with the, the Board of Ed, there was a, there was zero mill last year, which was, you know, I think very timely and needed, and, and then six hundred and forty-one thousand additional went back at the end of the year to the general fund from our budget that we didn't use, we didn't spend, and, and it, and it went back, and just important to note that we did have a deficit in our special ed line and our food services due to the operating system that we're in right now, we're anticipating about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, there will also be some realized savings this year, you know, we're keeping a close eye on that and forecasting it, Sam Adlerstein's working on that very closely, so just to be aware of of that as well, there are added costs, those were due to additional outplacements that moved into town, and we didn't know about at the time when you budget, so it's always a risk in your budget with special education, you just don't know, you know, if someone will move into town with a, you know, a very expensive special education cost.
Steve, can I just ask you a quick question-
Yeah, please do.
-about the special ed? Are some of these situations directly related to COVID and students not being able to get some of the services they had since the schools closed last March?
No, the, these are more, this specifically is related to students who moved into town with very significant needs, who need-
Okay.
-an outplacement program.
Okay.
And some of those can be over a quarter million dollars, to be honest with you, per year.
Yep.
But, so that's, that's what this is specifically related to, but our special ed students still received their education, there's, there wasn't any funding, additional funding other than the staffing that we normally have, and we kept everyone working last year and so providing an education online and-
So the excess cost grant, does that help with some of this, that-
Yeah, this is, this is the amount after excess cost.
This is after excess cost?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I look at the excess cost numbers every month from Vicky Trzynski and Sam, and we submit that to the, to the state every month.
So you think it'll be adjusted next year, because that far, that kind of, depending on what goes on prior year, as to what they calculate your excess cost to be going forward? Does that happen?
Their excess cost, they haven't really moved as far as their funding of excess cost, and that's been, that's been a bone of contention with superintendents with the state for a long time, it's, it's not fully funded, and you only get a portion of what you're supposed to get, but-
Right, okay, thank you.
So we budgeted a little bit of risk, because we just don't, you don't know, but-
Right.
And we, we do assume some risk there and hope to make it up in, in a different way. Okay, if you could go to the next slide, so the ECS that you had spoken about, Chairwoman Puglisi, this is, the red line is the, is the phased in, based on the agreement that was developed back in, in two thousand seventeen, if I'm not mistaken, I'm looking at, I can't, my eyes are going pretty bad, but you can see the governor's proposed budget has it on, has a two-year freeze for the next two years, and then it, and then it continues to go back to what, you know, the amount that we're supposed to be phasing up to, which is, you know, eventually twelve million, four hundred and seventy-five thousand, fifty-two dollars, so, you know, the hope and, and the word, you know, from, you know, legislatures and legislators and people at CAPS is that it's, it's, we're hoping that it doesn't go through, that it, the governor's budget doesn't hold, because it's, the formula was working and it, and it makes sense. I don't know if I missed anything on that slide? Yeah, that's all. And this is more about that, there's a lot of critique on that, on the, on the Mirror, the Connecticut Mirror, there was a big piece about the outcry of adversity to that decision. The next, the next few slides are going to talk to you a little bit about COVID's, COVID's impact, and just, just so you understand the whole picture, and I'm sure you've, you've been living it in a different way as well, it's been a twenty-four seven, you know, challenge, to be honest with you, in, in very different ways last year and this year, this is graduation out in the high school parking lot last year, you know, we planned that, and we started planning it at the airport, and then we planned, and then at the, the old GE parking lot, I got permission to have it there, and then I said, well, let's have it at the high school, I think we could fit, and we did, and it was, it was very nice, you know, there were a lot of positive, it was very special and unique, and I know we have a, the council members had a, happened to have a daughter graduating last year, so, you know, it wasn't a traditional graduation, but, you know, we, we overcame the challenges, we've been doing that throughout this entire, this entire last calendar year. Just, you know, and I won't read every word here, but I do want to share that right side, you know, there's just, I can't tell you the number of hours that me and my, my core team, you know, especially my COVID liaison Julie Samar, Stacy Buden, the HR director, just the contact tracing that's been involved in keeping our two thousand seven hundred members of our school community, including our students and all of our staff, safe, following all the rules of the health department, maintaining, containing things when there are cases, so there's no spread, to date, we have had a hundred and ten student cases, this, this changed a little bit since the last numbers on here, we were pretty busy last night and today with a few cases, but we've had twenty-one days of hybrid learning, this is as of the twenty-second, so it's, since then, it's been, you can add seven more full in-person, but seventy, about seventy-six full in-person days now, we had thirteen full remote days, some were like the wraparound after the Thanksgiving holiday as a precautionary, you know, and because of staffing, we were short on staffing, and then, you know, eight, we've had a few after the, or before the, the holiday break and the winter break, but then we've had five remote snow days that are included in that thirteen, so there were, there were eight other than the five remote snow days, we don't have to make those days up, we've had robust learning going on remotely on all of those five snow days, we had one traditional snow day too, it's been a very snowy year, so, and then just looking at the, the amount of hours in contact tracing, you know, I wouldn't wish it on anyone, but I think we've done a really, really good job with it, three hundred and ninety-five isolations since September, four hundred and forty-six quarantines, three hundred and fifty-four non-school-related quarantines, so almost eight, well, eight hundred quarantines exactly during that time, hundred and two confirmed student cases, it's now at a hundred and ten since I developed this slide, thirty-five confirmed staff cases, that changed by one today, and then to date, we still don't have any confirmed school transmission, you know, I, I can't, I can't say one hundred percent, but there have only been as many, the most would be four cases where there was, there were two people within one classroom that opposite ends, they got it, but in those cases, they also had someone at home, a parent, or someone who also had it, so it's more likely they got it at the dinner table than in that classroom with all the precautions we've taken, and all that money from the CRF and CARES Act that we spent, all right, sorry, just proud of that, and I like to, to share kind of the journey that's been, this is, this is another thing that we're, we're planning for with about our twenty, twenty-some odd projects with the, the ESR two funding, to combat learning loss and to recover our students to where we need them to be, everyone has a different situation, everyone has a different learning environment, and if you're not in school, you know, depending on what's happening in your household, you know, it's, children are experiencing a very different learning experience, if their parents are home, or if they're not, they may have two medical, you know, parents who are working, they have an older sibling checking in on the child, whether they're trying to, you know, so it's very, it's very difficult in many, for many kids. So what will we face moving forward, you know, we have a lot of plans that we're, were based on, on assessments, and will, we're going to do what we need to, to help our kids recover fully and meet their goals. And I'm sorry, on that last slide, we also had a total of four hundred and seventy-five, I think I, I can't even see it from there, but four hundred and seventy-five, I believe, fully remote learners who opted to be home, and then we also had all the students who were quarantined, you know, coming, coming and going after their ten-day quarantine or fourteen-day or twenty, you know, depending on which situation. We did lose a hundred and twelve students from the district for a number of COVID-related reasons and other reasons that moved for, for financial reasons related, you know, some related to COVID, some because of they had to go take care of a family member, so we're expecting that some will come back, or quite a few will come back. Next slide, sorry, man, thank you. So I just, you know, I know, I think Robert picked on me for this slide, but adding unity, unity to our community, I, I really believe that our schools do add that, that they're kind of the glue in many ways, that helps to hold, along with a lot of other programs and services that hold a community and make them strong, and I'm really proud of our schools, if you can't tell. On the next slide, and I presented this to the Chamber of Commerce the other night as one of my slides, just talking about, you know, we're a local employer of a lot of employees who live in town and live in, you know, adjacent towns who shop in town and pay taxes here, we're business partner to many, and we're desirable, we're part of making this a desirable community, we're central to the strength and purpose and unity within our community, and we provide the solid foundation upon which legacies are made, and I'll, and I'll show you in a couple of slides. That slide on the right is not mine, that's, that's, I gave credits from, from the internet, but it shows you the connections between school and so many different entities and organizations in your community and the, the two-way partnerships. The list on the left does list all the things, or actually, not even all the things, a lot of the different partnerships that we have, you know, whether it's the mentoring program, internships, fieldwork experience, the, the way we honor veterans, our career days, our police partnerships, you know, library, it goes on and on, positive youth development, you know, it's, it's just, it's a list that we're very proud of, and we've, we spend a lot of time, you know, building on that. The next slide, well, the next two slides, I, I know, I may get picked on for the pictures, but there's only two slides, I think, with pictures, I really refrained, these just show some of the, the grants that we were awarded through the, you know, the Pettit Foundation and through the Community Foundation of New Britain, Great New Britain, and then the Elizabeth Norton Trust, which is such a strong supporter of our school programs, the fire department, and so, you know, community partners with Trump Manufacturing and many others, where our students go out and have fieldwork experiences, so we really try to build those connections with our community, and it, it's a two-way benefit, and I figured you can make fun of me in my onesie, and if you're not a Patriots fan, I'm, you know, I'm sorry, but I did have my, my PJ Day for the Kids, we're having another one on our Vaccine Clinic Day on Friday, actually, we're hoping to break the ten thousand dollar mark, we raised seven thousand dollars, everyone in the district participated, kids, faculty, and we had a lot of fun with it, and it's for a really great cause and, and in memory of Axel Lulet, one of our students we lost a couple of years ago, last year. And then just, you know, donating PPE back to the town from all of our shop programs last year, just trying to be a partner, a community partner, raising, raising food and money for the food pantries, you know, there's a lot on here, feel free to look at it and read it, just some great pictures, oh, I'm sorry, I did have one more picture slide, just the next one, just some Blue Devil alumni quotes, and I think you see one of your town council members up there, not to, not to pick on you, Mr. Rocco, but Mr. Rocco came back and spoke at a career day, as did Brent Davenport, one of our board members, and all of those, a lot of those students were my former students who came back, they're successful, doing very well in life, and they want to get back to the community, and we have alumni that are very, typically, they're very appreciative of the education they receive here, so there's some quotes there from, you know, my eye doctor, Dr. Maglio, and just, you know, saying how, and, and I won't read them all to you, and Phil Cox, and then also Melissa Saroyes, who was one of my students, but, you know, students from Plainville who are appreciative of what they receive when they were here, that they got a solid education, good relationships, and they, it set them up for success. And the next slide, not as recent alumni, but, you know, the, the Bello brothers, John Bello and Jerry Bello, and I, I meet with Jerry Bello fairly regularly because he wants to get back to the community, and, you know, we, we talk about that and how he's going to do that, and, and, you know, I, I remember I had a, when I was the principal, I had a, an honor, a benefit, a senior awards night, and somebody had made that, the logo, you know, quadifasis benefos, and it was, there was a letter spelled wrong, and he called me on it afterwards, he said, you had that wrong, it's, you know, so we had to, we had to correct it, but it's what you do, do well, and, you know, that's the legacy, you know, if you read their, their legacy and how much they valued what they got from Plainville Schools, and how proud they are to be from Plainville and all the people that touched their life, and, and Jerry wanted to have all these scholarships for, in honor of teachers who made a difference in his life. And we're coming to the end here. Efficiency and budgeting, so, you know, I, I want, I want the town council and the town, members of the town, and, and I know the Board of Ed knows this, but at this point, everything in gray on that, that timeline has already happened for the Board of Education, we've spent a lot of time, we start in the summer, actually, looking at a really aligned budget that aligns to the vision, and we, and we take out anything that doesn't belong there, and then it gets cut back even more, it's reviewed thoroughly by our Board of Education, so by the time it gets to this point, and I'm a very transparent person, I'm not going to, and I don't, I won't add anything to a budget I don't believe that we need, so by the time it gets to this point, it's- So by the time it gets to this point, it's been, it's been pretty well-vetted, and I know you're going to do your due diligence and look at it, but, you know, my goal is to provide a maximum, like, in bold there, a maximum benefit to students at a minimum impact to taxpayers, providing a budget all can support through referendum, and that's on April 27th, I believe. So we still have a few more steps there. And the next slide, the summary slide, and then if you have any questions, this just shows you what I'm, you know, what our Board of Education approved, which is actually a lower percentage and a lower dollar amount than last year, $884,705 for an increase of 2.26%, and you see the total budgets there. And then if you have any questions, they'll be before I stop talking, take a breath, turn the mic back over to Robert. And thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Superintendent LaPage before we move on? Thank you very much for putting this together for us tonight.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. No? Okay, good job. Robert, are you back in?
Yes, I will briefly review the debt service, capital improvement budget, and then just the overall mil rate and how that was calculated. With regards to debt service, we owe a little bit under $20 million on our debt remaining. Town government makes up about $6.3 million, and the schools are $13.5 million. I will tell you that next year, when we bond, permanently bond, we're planning to do in September, that will add to this $19 million. But, you know, going into this year, you know, that is, that's how much is left outstanding as far as our principal and interest is concerned. Our actual payment is on the next slide. We budgeted $4,430,000, which is the same amount that we budgeted this year, so there's no increase. Of that, principal and interest, $560,000 of that will go to the town buildings previously bonded, and almost $2.9 million will go to the, you know, to debt service for Board of Education. That's a difference of $975,000, which is available to, for our health insurance deficit that we spoke about about a month ago. So, and those numbers shouldn't be too surprising to you, at least as far as what we were anticipating as a, as a surplus on that line for next year. Next is a capital improvement plan, recommending a budget of a little bit over $2 million for capital improvements, remembering, of course, that about $313,000 would come from the general fund. Other sources of revenue for this, for this amount will come from the unassigned fund balance, $869,000. LoSAP grant funding, $630,000. We received, this is, these are monies that have been built up in a LoSAP account for several years now, so we, you know, I'm recommending that we use a good portion of that for next year's funding of this particular budget. Town aid road grant funding, $240,000. I'll explain to you how I came up with that number, and in the next slide, and $10,000 from, basically from completed projects that came in a little bit under budget. So that is the sources of revenue that I'm recommending for a capital improvement budget of a little bit over $2 million. These are some of the large ticket items. We're proposing to, I'm recommending 40 capital improvement projects, 27 for the town and 13 for the Board of Education. These are, I think, the top nine or, nine or so of those. First one is town facilities paving. Basically proposing that the firehouse, especially the front of the firehouse and the back parking lot, and the driveway that goes around the west side of the building be repaved, it's in serious need of repaving, and the police department parking lot. We're proposing to pay both of those parking lots as part of next year's budget, and I'm recommending that, and you see that number is $240,000, I'm recommending that we use town aid road monies of $240,000 to offset that paving of those two parking lots. You'll see a catch basin cleaner, this is for the Public Works Department, it's, it's an older piece of equipment, it's a relatively expensive piece of equipment, it's somewhere around $400,000. I'm recommending that we put away $200,000 this year and $200,000 next year. Goostown radio system for the police department, that's our annual amount of $160,000, and the Class A apparatus for the fire department, that's beginning to save over a five-year period for the next engine replacement. So this is, this is for, for the next engine replacement, which is, you know, about four years out now, and to budget $160,000 a year for five years. Right now, we're budgeting estimation for that truck, you know, four and a half years out, four years out, five years out, it's somewhere around $800,000. Concrete sidewalk repair and replacement, $150,000, recommending we put that aside. You see two items, two of 13 items from the Board of Education, student Chromebooks and Toflon, school display upgrade. Also talking about replacing a large mower, which, in buildings and grounds, that those are recreational fields, and also replacement of two cruisers. So of those remaining 31 projects, they average about $25,000 apiece. You have detail of that in your, in your books as far as all those, all those items. Last is the mil rate calculation. You remember at the first slide that the overall budget was a little bit over $64 million. Our less direct revenue estimates of about $14.5 million, that leaves a net budget of $49.5 million. Recommending a use of fund balance of $400,000 for next year's budget. Adjustment for uncollected taxes of about $1.3 million. What that means is that the amount to be raised is about $50,400,000. Value of one mil is $1,429,000, so you divide the amount to be raised by the calculated, by the value of a mil, and that works out to 35.29 mils. The next slide indicates that the current mil rate is 34.62, the proposed mil rate of 35.29, it's a difference of 0.67 mils or 1.94%. You saw that on an earlier slide. And as we talked about earlier in the discussion, the projected health insurance rate impact to the Board of Education's budget, as, you know, we indicated that it was after they, the Board of Education had approved their budget, that we found out that the insurance rates were going to be significantly lower than what was budgeted. We've calculated that that's worth about $202,000. I do not have the authority under the, under the town charter to arbitrarily lower that, that's the town's, town council consideration, but just to give you, for instance, if the council does reduce the Board of Education's budget by $202,000, that would mean that their percentage increase would go from 2.26% to about 1.75% as far as their increase is concerned, expenditure increase, and that would, that would adjust the mil rate to a little bit over one-half a mil or 1.53%. I will say that there's still a couple of other items that could have a significant impact on this budget in a positive fashion to lower that mil rate further. One is, is the ECS, we've talked about that already, that there's a possibility that the phase-in will continue as opposed to the governor's recommendation. That would add $235,000 on the revenue side. We feel optimistic that the overall increase of Valley Ward is asked for, for PURA will come in under what they, and that impact to Plainville will be less than what, you know, what the full impact would be. I don't, I would be very surprised if it was zero, we certainly would, would hope for that, or they push off the rate increase, but I'm expecting some type of impact, but that could positively impact us because we put in the full amount, and we hope to have by the time the council sets the mil rate that we'll know what that amount will be from PURA. The other item is the federal COVID-19 bill, which is, which passed the House over the, I think, late, early Friday morning, excuse me, early Saturday morning, late Friday night. It's, it's in the Senate right now. That bill contains a significant amount of aid to local municipalities and states. We received, you know, information that it could be $3.4 million that could come towards Plainville's way. However, we're under the same restrictions as far as what that money could be used for. It can't be used to supplant or replace monies that are in the current year's budget, they could only be used to supplement, but, you know, until we get the specifics of what it can be used for, there may be some creative ways that we can use to positively impact our budget, so that, you know, we wouldn't have to raise as much. But, you know, we won't know that until the Senate passes it, and then when we get direction, we hope to get that before our budget process is over with. So those three items, I think, are, you know, are, you know, give us optimism that we'll be able to lower that 1.5% tax increase, you know, reduce it further. And so at this point in time, I'd like to say that this is, the 1.53% increase or half a mil is our worst-case scenario.
Yep. That's very good news.
Yeah, some would say that's a good ending point, never mind a starting point.
Indeed.
But, you know, so with regards to our mil rate history, and again, it's something that I'm very proud of, and I know my staff is, and it certainly wouldn't be done without the cooperation and the diligence of the Board of Education as well as the superintendents over the last several years. Our mil rate has averaged over the last nine years as an average annual increase of 1.34%. Taxes have gone up an average of 1.34% a year over the last nine years. With regards to the impact to the average homeowner, 1.53% for the, for the average homeowner who's paying $4,750 for taxes, the increase this budget represents, again, at 1.53%, which would include the Board of Education's reduction of $202,000, represents $73 a year to the average house, and for condominium owners that pay $3,311, in the current fiscal year, it would be an increase of $51 a year. Again, our, this is the town of Plainville's proposed budget. Our public hearing is Thursday, March 4th, which is this Thursday at 7:00 PM, where the public will have the opportunity to weigh in on the budget. We will get this published on the webpage, we'll get some, you know, notices on, on social media, and then our workshops begin Monday of next week. We are hoping that the, that the, we will not be restricted this year with regards to town-wide vote on the budget, which is the last Tuesday in April, I believe, that's April 26th, 27th? 27th? And that would be an all-day vote at the, at the firehouse, we would only cancel that if we were, if we were, you know, you know, if we got direction from the state. Otherwise, we, you know, our plan is to go forward with a town-wide vote. And there'll be a public, the council, when they finish their, your review, there'll be another public hearing probably in early April, and where people will be able to weigh in on any adjustments that you make with respect to this proposed budget. So again, I thank my, the school staff and my staff for putting this together. We try to make it as, as, I guess, representative of all the, you know, the book, but try to break it down so that it's easier to understand.
Okay, well, thanks to both of you for everything. Again, this past year has been one that none of us have ever experienced before, and hopefully never again. Things have changed, monies have changed, things move around, it's been very difficult to forecast some of these things, and there's money that comes in, and what do you do with it, and what are the restrictions on it, but hopefully this will all end up going toward programs and things to make Plainville and their, our families and taxpayers in a better frame. So I hope that this thing starts to change to a positive outlook in a lot of ways, that businesses can start to reopen more than they've had been. Hopefully, our recreation things for the summer can open up a little bit more than they had in the past. Last summer, there's restrictions on using pools and programs and things like that, so I hope that things will start to improve now that vaccines are becoming available and things, again, they're always changing. So it has been an unusual year for everybody, and I appreciate all the thoughtfulness that you put into these, these documents, because they are important, and I appreciate that certainly. Does anybody else have any questions or comments for superintendent of schools or town manager at this point? You may have more as we get going into the budget, but this is our first look. No? Okay, well, good job.
Thank you.
So far, we're in good shape. Okay, moving on, matter for appropriate, we don't have an executive session, I'm sorry. Do we have any other items of discussion that you would like to bring forward? Mr. Lee, anything else you'd like to share?
I do not.
No? Okay. Anybody else have anything tonight? All right, okay. We do not have an executive session, so at this point, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn, please. Anybody?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much, everybody.